Good evening. I'd like to call the October 23rd, 2012 Longmont City Council Meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Councilmembers Bagley, Finley, Levison, Samore, Santos, Witt. Mayor Coombs, do we have a quorum?
All right. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to have the troop, Scout Troop 128 lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. We'll have to add his or her name to the list outside of council chambers. I guess only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on that list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or final call, public invited to be heard on any of the items of the meeting. We now have the minutes to approve for October 9th. Are there any corrections or additions to make? Does someone have a motion?
I would move the minutes from October 9th.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Resolution R 2012 92 was forwarded to you, I believe, yesterday. It's a resolution of statutory compliance for the airport road annexation. We're adding that to the consent agenda as item 9H. Council originally approved the same resolution on October 9th, but due to clerical error, we forgot to publish the public hearing, and so therefore we have to redo it in order to set that out a little bit further. So this annexation will come back to you for December 4th, and that's what this resolution does.
Is there a report from the city manager?
Mayor and council, we do have a couple items tonight. The first is based on information that I've received is that historically, as we move into the period from November 23rd to December 28th, we allow for worry-free parking on Fridays for downtown shoppers and diners. In the past, this information has been presented to the council in city manager comments to let you know that we are going to engage in that practice again this year. So providing the council with the information. If you have any thoughts or concerns, please let us know. Otherwise, we will continue as we have in previous years. The other item that we would like to bring to council's attention today, unfortunately, one of the reasons that we did, or not unfortunately, one of the reasons we do have the city manager's report is to handle those situations that come up very quickly when we do not have time to put them on the agenda. Based on the schedule that we have for upcoming council meetings, we have had one such issue come up, and it's a positive issue, I will tell council now. It's not a negative, it's a positive that we're going to talk about. But we would like to get council's input on this item. Ryan and Scott from Bicycle Longmont received a request from the USA Pro Cycling Challenge, where they are requesting that we submit a proposal to be a host city in next year's event. Based on the information that we have, that I've received today in a meeting, basically, they said that if they are requesting a proposal from you, then that really has a potential to bode well for a community. As a result of this, the downside is, is they received it last Friday. It is due November 16th. The next city council meeting that we have is November 13th, and so we didn't want to put something together and then bring it to you on the 13th and say we have to have a decision today to turn in on Friday. So what we wanted to do is use this opportunity to allow them to talk to you about these submission, the request for proposal, get some direction from council, and do you want us to proceed with this? And if council has any parameters that they would like to provide for us today, that would help as we prepare a proposal for Longmont. So at this point, I'm going to ask Ryan and Scott to come up and talk about the proposal.
There we go. Cool. All right. My name is Ryan Craigrood. I live at 615 Lincoln Street in beautiful Old Town Longmont. And I'm also president of Bicycle Longmont, and this is Scott Conlon.
Yep, 1014 Fifth Avenue. I'm a board member of Bicycle Longmont.
Exactly. So we first want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come and speak during the city manager's report. Basically, what we want to talk about is exactly what City Manager Dominguez was just talking to you about. If you remember, last summer, we had the opportunity, USA Pro Challenge contacted Bicycle Longmont and said, "We want you to come out to the USA Pro Cycling Challenge and tour with us and see how these different applications come together, speak with elected officials, speak with community officials, as well as volunteers within Durango and Montrose." And then we also tagged on to Venison and Crested Butte as a part of the USA Pro Challenge. We were able to go out and speak with the mayor of Montrose, as well as the local organizing committee within Durango, and kind of hear from them in their own words, very candidly, how this all comes together. And what I want to talk to you this evening about, we're trying, we want to get direction from the council to begin to put an application together and work with city staff so that we can get an application together. But the number one thing I want you all to take away from this is that this has to be a broad-based, community-wide organizing committee. So it's not something that we're coming to city council saying, you know, "Give us a bucket of money and then you guys get to do it all." And then we go back and then come back on, you know, August 19th or something like that. So no, what it is, it's a broad-based, community effort to put together what we think is one of the signature events for the state of Colorado, and we think that it really ties in well with the city's rebranding itself, as well as promoting Longmont as a bike-friendly community. And what we have seen from Bicycle Longmont's perspective over the last two years, cycling within Longmont, as well as in the northern Colorado area, has really exploded. We've had incredible attendance at a lot of our events that we do. We have the Goodnight Ride that we do every Father's Day weekend. And we also have our meetup rides where we have historically had one or two rides a month. This year, we were having as many as 12 to 15 rides a week, and those were for all ability levels and so forth. So what I want to do is have Scott jump into our presentation on the USA Pro Challenge.
So the USA Pro Cycling Challenge, or USA Pro Challenge, is the country's largest cycling event, pro cycling event. It ranks up there with the Tour de France and the Vuelta, Espana, and things like that. So it's a high-class cycling event. 130 cyclists, 13 or so teams. There's an entourage of about 1,000 people. When you get through all the support staff, trainers, and physicians, and everybody else with cycling. This year, they saw about a $99 million impact in the state of Colorado. About $82 million of that economic impact were from people in Colorado traveling to, say, Durango, who lived more than 50 miles away, or people who came from out-of-state. So the out-of-state numbers were, I think, 25 states and thousands of thousands of people. Overall, there was 1 million spectators at the event. Ryan and I got the opportunity to look at a number of different stages, a number of different presentations, as well as just see how they're all set up. And I think it gives us a good idea of what we could see and learn from for Longmont. So the benefits of hosting USA Pro Challenge is really putting your city on a worldwide stage. The overall impressions that are garnered through the media plan for the race itself is about 6 billion impressions. About 10% to 15% of those, this city's, and so if you're a host, you're being visited over and over again. It was broadcast to about 160 countries, as well as NBC Sports had it on for 31 hours, and NBC itself had it on live for the Denver coverage for six hours. So there's a lot of coverage nationally, as well as internationally for the event, and it covers each of the stages. the public hearing items this evening or at final call public invited to be heard on any of the items of the meeting. We now have the minutes to approve for October 9th. Are there any corrections or additions to make? Does someone have a motion? Councilmember Samore.
I would move the minutes from October 9th.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Yes, Mayor Coombs. Resolution R 2012 92 was forwarded to you, I believe, yesterday. It's a resolution of statutory compliance for the airport road annexation. We're adding that to the consent agenda as item 9H. Council originally approved the same resolution on October 9th, but due to a clerical error, we forgot to publish the public hearing, and so therefore we have to redo it in order to set that out a little bit further. So this annexation will come back to you for December 4th, and that's what this resolution does, is set the public hearing date for that.
Thank you. Is there a report from the City Manager?
Mayor and Council, we do have a couple items tonight. The first is, based on information that I've received, is that historically, as we move into the period from November 23rd to December 28th, we allow for worry-free parking on Fridays for downtown shoppers and diners. In the past, this information has been presented to the Council in City Manager comments to letting you, to let you know that we are going to engage in that practice again this year, so providing the Council with the information. If you have any thoughts or concerns, please let us know. Otherwise, we will continue as we have in previous years.
Thank you.
The other item that we would like to bring to Council's attention today, unfortunately, one of the reasons that we do, or not unfortunately, one of the reasons we do have the City Manager's report is to handle those situations that come up very quickly when we do not have time to put them on the agenda. Based on the schedule that we have for upcoming council meetings, we have had one such issue come up, and it's a positive issue, I will tell Council now. It's not a negative, it's a positive that we're going to talk about. But we would like to get Council's input on this item. Ryan and Scott from Bicycle Longmont received a request from the U.S. Pro Cycling Challenge, where they are requesting that we submit a proposal to be a host city in next year's event. Based on the information that we have, that I've received today in a meeting, basically they said that if they are requesting a proposal from you, then that really has a potential to bode well for a community. As a result of this, the downside is, is they received it last Friday. It is due November 16th. The next city council meeting that we have is November 13th, and so we didn't want to put something together and then bring it to you on the 13th and say we have to have a decision today to turn in on Friday. So what we wanted to do is use this opportunity to allow them to talk to you about these submission, the request for proposal, get some direction from Council, and do you want us to proceed with this? And if Council has any parameters that they would like to provide for us today, that would help as we prepare a proposal for Longmont. So at this point, I'm going to ask Ryan and Scott to come up and talk about the proposal.
There we go. Cool. All right, my name is Ryan Craigrood. I live at 615 Lincoln Street in beautiful Old Town Longmont, and I'm also president of Bicycle Longmont, and this is Scott Conlon.
Yep, 1014 Fifth Avenue. I'm a board member of Bicycle Longmont.
Exactly. So we first want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come and speak during the City Manager's report. Basically, what we want to talk about is exactly what City Manager Dominguez was just talking to you about. If you remember, last summer, we had the opportunity, USA Pro Challenge contacted Bicycle Longmont and said, "We want you to come out to the USA Pro Cycling Challenge and tour with us and see how these different applications come together, speak with elected officials, speak with community officials, as well as volunteers within Durango and Montrose." And then we also tagged on to Venison and Crested Butte as a part of the USA Pro Challenge. We were able to go out and speak with the mayor of Montrose, as well as the local organizing committee within Durango, and kind of hear from them in their own words, very candidly, how this all comes together. And what I want to talk to you this evening about, we're trying, we want to get direction from the Council to begin to put an application together and work with city staff so that we can get an application together. But the number one thing I want you all to take away from this is that this has to be a broad-based, community-wide organizing committee. So it's not something that we're coming to City Council saying, you know, "Give us a bucket of money, and then you guys get to do it all, and then we go back and then come back on, you know, August 19th or something like that." So no, what it is, it's a broad-based, community effort to put together what we think is one of the signature events for the state of Colorado, and we think that it really ties in well with the city's rebranding itself, as well as promoting Longmont as a bike-friendly community. And what we have seen from Bicycle Longmont's perspective over the last two years, cycling within Longmont, as well as in the northern Colorado area, has really exploded. We've had incredible attendance at a lot of our events that we do. We have the Goodnight Ride that we do every Father's Day weekend, and we also have our meetup rides where we have, historically had one or two rides a month. This year, we were having as many as 12 to 15 rides a week, and those were for all ability levels and so forth. So what I want to do is have Scott jump into our presentation on the USA Pro Challenge.
So the USA Pro Cycling Challenge, or USA Pro Challenge, is the country's largest cycling event, pro cycling event. It ranks up there with the Tour de France and the Vuelta, Espana, and things like that. So it's a high-class cycling event, 130 cyclists, 13 or so teams, there's an entourage of about 1,000 people, when you get through all the support staff, trainers, and physicians, and everybody else with cycling. This year, they saw about a $99 million impact in the state of Colorado. About $82 million of that economic impact were from people in Colorado traveling to, say, Durango, who lived more than 50 miles away, or people who came from out-of-state. So the out-of-state numbers were, I think, 25 states and thousands of thousands of people. Overall, there was 1 million spectators at the event. Ryan and I got the opportunity to look at a number of different stages, a number of different presentations, as well as just see how they're all set up, and I think it gives us a good idea of what we could see and learn from for Longmont. So the benefits of hosting USA Pro Challenge is really putting your city on a worldwide stage. The overall impressions that are garnered through the media plan for the race itself is about 6 billion impressions, about 10% to 15% of those, this city's, and so if you're a host, you're being visited over and over again. It was broadcast to about 160 countries, as well as NBC Sports had it on for 31 hours, and NBC itself had it on live for the Denver coverage for six hours. So there's a lot of coverage nationally, as well as internationally, for the event, and it covers each of the stages. So there are three stage types that we can apply for, bid for, or respond to the RFP. One is a stage start. It's the low-cost option. Quite frankly, the riders line up, they do a couple ceremonial runs, and they take off out of the city, and then it's our job to hold them in as long as possible and spend money downtown or wherever we're holding the event. The second one is a stage finish. This is the really, you know, the really exciting end of the, an end of a race. They give out the medals, they have a lot of announcements, and there's way, there's much more news coverage for a finish, whereas a start, they'll go back to the roll, show a little bit of your city, but a finish shows a lot more. Now that's, and we'll get into the budget about these things, but it's a little bit more for that. And then there's another option where you're a time trial, and you do both the start and the finish for your city, but it locks down the city for pretty much two days solid because the riders have to ride through the city. That's there. So on that last slide there on the second page, the budgets for a stage start is about $50,000 to $75,000. It's about $100,000, $125,000 for a stage finish, and $125 on up for a time trial, where I can look at bids for the overall start or the overall finish. Those numbers start at $500,000. But so, so what makes up the $50,000 and up is really a lot of in-kind support. It's not cash allotment. We're not coming to the City Council asking for $50,000, you have to approve it like in a few weeks. What we're saying is that a lot of our resources are already being spent in the city to put on events, such as, you know, say Festival on Main, or resources that Bicycle Longmont brings, and other groups bring from festivals, we can put towards this event, and that's a lot of that $50,000 or $75,000. About one-third of the overall allotment or budget is actual cash spend, and that could be done through, raising it through sponsorships, having other partners, if Visit Longmont contributes to this as one of those partners, the community aspect of this event. For marketing purposes, a lot of it's printing costs, and some of those hard costs, but a lot of the other costs and city staff is what we would, we're asking for City Council to consider, is, there's a lot of time involved. I know Len Marcus from Traffic was involved in the Boulder stage this year for it, and so we'd be calling on the same sort of people to do that.
So if I can jump in real quick. One of the things that I did point out to Ryan and Scott is that obviously we've been talking about some difficult budget years, or a difficult budget year, and, you know, just funds is something that we have to be really careful for as we look to the future. One of the things that we did talk about, and the reason why I'm jumping in is because I forgot to say it earlier, at part of the meeting, Joe was in attendance and Kimberly was in attendance, and so their boards haven't heard about this, but Kimberly has a meeting tomorrow with her board, and she's going to mention it to him, and then Joe's going to take it to his board as well. We're just all trying to move quickly, so that's part of why it's coming to Council first, based on the schedule. But going back to what we talked about, we spent a lot of time talking about how can we grab existing dollars and actually count them toward the in-kind portion of the dollar amount? So we spent some time looking at Festival on Main, and that's, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of $36,000. How can we capture that event in conjunction with this and use, and essentially count the dollar twice? Because it's something they're looking for. So that's the type of thought process that we engaged in earlier today, is to really get more bang for our buck, understanding that we do have parameters that we're going to have to work with in terms of our budget and how we look at this. Is that clear enough?
Yep, exactly.
Sounds good.
Yep. And the other, the other item is that right now we're talking in global, large concepts. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll get more detail, and we'll be able to find out more about what's going to go into the application as we put that together, and we'll have a lot of detail that we'll bring back to Council if you decide to move forward with this this evening as well.
So one of the things that we wanted to bring up again was the cost-sharing part of it, and the community-wide effort is, we would look for our partners, if it is downtown, if we decide to do it downtown, and we can join up with Festival on Main to hold people in town longer. That is a cost-sharing maneuver there for, for the event itself, but also to, you know, put together other events maybe the night before, and so then we can have really a good package put together for people to stay in hotels longer in downtown and, or in town altogether. So other things that contribute to the, this, the dollar figure are sponsorships. Metalist Sports, who puts on the USA Pro Cycling Challenge, actually gives us a number of properties to sell, the VIP tent being one of the biggest ones, and so we sell VIP tickets, and then people can stay there, other experiences they can have with pro riders, and then there are other assets we can help sell to help offset some of these costs and get some of that, you know, that hard cash for the event. In addition, we would be looking for straight sponsorships in the community with the festival. There's always an opportunity for beer sales and a beer garden, and we think that could be a revenue generator, as well as merchandise sales, and so. Yeah. And, and so, and so having other merchandise sales as well. I actually bought a hat in Montrose and love it, so now I'm branded with Montrose all everywhere I go. But, so, so the obligations are listed here as well. It basically starts off with hotel and route support are some of the big items that are there, that we have to pay for, for Metalist Sports to come in and basically educate us on how to put this thing together, and then having route support and traffic work out some of those details, as well as, you know, this, this street village and this dark village or the finish village and that sort of thing. So again, a lot of the costs are ones that the city already has sunk in, and it's just we're going to be trying to, you know, use those resources for this particular event in order to get some return for, for taxpayers. So economically, USA Pro Cycling Challenge is only in its second year, so it's tough to do a lot of economic returns data. The ones that have have actually shown positive returns. Boulder's in the midst of writing their report, but they showed a couple days ago an $800,000 increase in the sales tax for August year-over-year, and, which is about a 10% increase, and both the Visitors Bureau and the Finance Department say that there is a substantial portion of that that's contributed by the, the race itself. So they're still working out the report, we'll get those numbers. But a race that's put on by Metalist Sports is very similar to USA Pro Challenge, is the Amgen Tour of California, and this is in its eighth year, going into its eighth year, and so most of the cities already know what these numbers are, and they know them very well. Most of the cities now bid on a fifth and sixth year of, into these events, and so the rate of return is anything from three to one, which is a stage start, through almost 12 to one rates of return. So they're really great rates, positive rates of return for these, there's a number of analysis reports for them and that sort of thing. So it's really positive economics for the city, both in the short term as well as a long-term exposure for the city. So, so it, just in, in conclusion, I guess, yeah, we're just, we're just looking for some support from City Council to, to move forward with staff to, to help us out, assess this out between now and November 13th, to work on our bid to Metalist Sports, to have questions answered, and to be able to come back to City Council with, you know, specific members and answers for it.
It seems to me if we had a rate of return of even one to one, it would be a win for the city because it gets our name and our brand out there, so I don't see a real downside.
Correct.
And I have one point. Kimberly just pointed out, we talked about in conjunction with Festival on Main, it actually happens at the same week, so it's not like we're asking to move it to the day of, it's actually the same week, and that's, that's what started the conversation.
Okay.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan and Scott, I got a question. The application, does it tie us to a start or a finish?
No, we, we bid what we want. So through our conversation this, this morning, I think what we would do is, is bid for, say, a, a finish on, if it was with Festival on Main for that Friday, so that they're near each other, or a start that following morning.
Well, I guess my question is that for some reason we lose, let's say we applied for the finish, and they really like us, but they said, "No, we really want you to have a start."
We, yeah, we, that's negotiable.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, I would say that the U.S. Pro Cycling Challenge belongs in Longmont.
Councilmember Finley?
I would second that. I think it's an awesome idea, and I think it's great that you've taken this on, and I wholeheartedly support it. Only you have to name the beer garden, Bonnie's Beer Garden.
For $50,000, I'm sure.
Yeah, we could do that.
Get out your checkbook.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you. So who do you have on your team writing the grant? Because it's really hard to write one of these kind of grants, and I know we've got some expertise in the community, I know we have some expertise within city staff. So who's helping with this? Who, do you have, like, your, your level of readers who are going to pick it apart for language and for seeing if you answered the question, and if you've got all the budget numbers adding up? Tell me about some of the mechanics, please.
So right now, we have a committee of Scott, myself, another board, two board members, and then hopefully Kimberly and some other folks in the staff after tonight. But to get to your question, Councilmember Levinson, basically last year, we pioneered a new type of application, which is basically taking the application that we'll be putting together over the next couple of weeks, and what we were trying to do last year, we didn't have the funds, we didn't think we could access them fast enough to get a start or a finish done, so we approached Metalist, and we're the first community to ever request, just to be passed through, you know, just to kind of have the riders go through and just have a great experience that way. So the application that we did, we basically went through all of the steps that this application will encompass, but we did it with the, with the outcome of being a pass-through community. This will be different, and that we'll have to do more detail, and we'll look to the experts in the community to help us out with that and so forth. So we don't have anyone, a grant writer identified specifically, but Scott is a grant writer by trade, so.
Okay. And so you're telling me you basically have a template with some of the blanks filled in with, you know, description of community, all that kind of nice lovely stuff, but I would suggest, I'm, I'm sure that, I've already heard three council members, but I'll add my fourth yes, and to say that we've got a lot of people within our city staff who are really good at writing grants, and also I tap into even having some of our nonprofits, even though they write grants in other areas that might, you know, they're good at writing grants and getting money, some of the other nonprofits. I'd maybe see if one of their people that does grants could read it for you, because it's always great to have extra readers, because you know your stuff, you may miss some crucial point that somebody else will bring. And then, I, I guess, I'd like to know whether or not they, do they make the route of the tour based on who they get applications for? Or how do they, I mean, maybe going a little bit back to Councilmember Santos's point about start/finish?
So it's, it's a combination of things. One is, is partly based on the route itself to be competitive and international cycling environment. So they have to have so many 12,000-foot passes, so many 100-mile or 110-mile days, and then that's all put together. Then, then they get the applications from the cities and try to work out a schedule that works. And what really works for a front-range, most front-range towns, is that would be on the late end of the race itself. It'd be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Denver being Sunday, for the most part. So, so that, that's where we would mostly fit in, where Monday through Thursday is going to be up in the mountains, and so there'd be mountain towns, connecting mountain towns. They're trying to make the connections between, or the transfers between the towns smaller, and so you're having more and more cities now, like Crested Butte or Steamboat, take bids for both a finish and a start the next morning. So they go that way. So they work out some of those things, and then there's other variables. If the National Park Service says they are interested, and then they change their mind, that makes a big difference, or the Forest Service is going to have a controlled burn, that changes plans and things like that, too. So the timeline is very tight, and they actually award in December, so it's not a complicated application, which makes it great for all of us, but they award in December, and they, for the most part, have a route ready by January, February. So we'll have a, we should have a schedule, a rough schedule, where we would place in January at the latest.
And could you get ahold of the other cities who have had starts or finishes to see how they ramp up? Because when it's such a, it's nice if they're not going to string you along too many months, but I think that in deference to, you know, the organization of budget for Visit Longmont, for what other events they have coming to them, and also LDDA planning, it really would be nice for everybody to get on board together, like a, a task force or something, and then see where the city can help be supportive. You know, is there other possibility of, is there a Guinness Book of World Records we could pile on with this? Like, how many people could be on a bicycle in a downtown at one time, and we could stage another, you know, everybody coming to the festival, plus the bike riders being on bicycles and, and biking a block, and we could get a Guinness World Record as well? That would be very cool. Or, I don't know, Largest Bicycle Parade, whatever we can do. I'm just looking for ideas to leverage as much publicity as we can throughout the beginning in January up to the event, too.
Councilmember Witt?
Do we need an official motion?
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's do that. Start?
Yeah, I can clarify some, you know, one of, some of the things that I mentioned in the discussion is, I did mention to Ryan and Scott that this is going to have to have significant community involvement, because when we look at this, ability for us to step in and actually be the organizer or DDA, we're going to have to work together, and, and so we talked about this, and so I wanted to throw that out to Council to make sure that you're okay with that direction and the information that I provided to them related to involvement and bringing other aspects to the table. And we also wanted to see, is there any parameters that you want to place that we know what to work off of as we're preparing the application, so we don't come in and potentially miss something or on the 13th, so. We also talked about community support financially, those sorts of things, so if that's the direction you want to go on, I just wanted to mention that I had that discussion as well.
Okay. So do you need an official motion or no? Okay, then I will move that we direct staff to work with Bike Longmont in their application process for the USA Pro Challenge.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. And Harold, you know, I would see, I, I read in here like an organizing committee?
Yes.
So that's what you're looking to pull together after?
That's what we pulled together, that's correct.
And, and I would see staff being a kind of a liaison to that committee, whether it's one or two, but, you know, I, and you guys mentioned earlier, you don't want us to drive it for you, community involvement's going to be very key.
There, there are some members of the LSE that should most likely be staff employees. Traffic is one of them, PR is usually a city employee as well, so those are highly related to city positions.
We could use, you know, I don't want them to be focused, I don't want to take somebody from another project, you know, perhaps we have a couple liaisons and they can filter that down to those appropriate staff members, you know, I don't want to tie somebody up. I, I think this is, I think this is great, and I'd like to see this happen, but this isn't the only thing that's going on, and we have other things as well. You know, I see Kathy Weber-Harting's here, you know, you get the chamber involved, you have other organizations, as Councilmember Levinson said, non-profits. You know, if, if this, if we are awarded, this is going to be huge for the city of Longmont, and I would hope for a finish, because from, I, I met with Joe Ward a while back, and he said they kept talking about the finish in Boulder, Boulder, Colorado, Boulder, Colorado, all, all over NBC Sports. That's great branding and advertising that is free. So, you know, I, I'm in favor of the motion, let's just, let's just make sure that it's, it is a community committee that, that is spearheading this.
Councilmember Samore?
I would concur with everything that's being said, but I see on here that Amgen has a tour in California. Maybe they could be one of the big community members that would sponsor the event, or Xialings, or Seagate, or one of those where the majority of the money could maybe come from them, and they may be able to get their employees involved in volunteering for the project as well. And since Councilmember Levinson mentioned Guinness, I think Guinness Beer would be a good thing.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I am for this. I think it's a great idea, but I just want to voice, I'm sure there will be people in the community, I mean, you two love bikes, you guys, you know, I mean, you guys live, eat, and breathe this stuff. I rode bikes. The mayor definitely rode bikes. He took me out for a ride once and spanked me pretty hard. But my, I guess my concern as we move forward is, I mean, shutting down our town for bicycle race is going to lead to people who don't like bicycling worrying about, how am I going to get to work? What's all this traffic going on? So I mean, it will have, I guess if we're going to do it, I mean, I don't want it just to do it because it's a big party and it sounds fun. Because to tell you the truth, it doesn't sound fun to me. I don't like going and cheering for bicyclists as they go down the road. I'm not going to be there. I'll go downtown and hang with you guys. But I guess I'd really want, as we move forward, I'd like to include in our motion that we direct city staff, I would only want to do this if it is an, I mean, a truly slam dunk, net economic positive. And so if it's a net economic positive, I'm all for it. If we're just going to have a party and spend a lot of time and then get ticked off when we have a finish and they go, and it's Boulder County, Colorado! You know, I mean, what the heck do we just do? So I mean, I'm for it, I'm going to vote for it, but I would really be disappointed if we just wound up spending a lot of time, money, effort, and energy, and at the end we went, well, that was fun, but there was really no money in it at the end. So show me the money.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and vote? Okay, that passes seven to zero. Well, thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you very much for your indulgence this evening and letting us walk this onto your agenda. We appreciate it.
We have one more question.
So you also have requesting a letter of support for the stage start or finish and a letter of supporting commitment. And you have seven members of council that have voted. So there's your support. But if you need council support for the starter or finish, you know, I would be in favor of a finish.
I'm definitely in favor of the finish.
So I would move that we, we support two things. And I'll, I hate doing two motions in one, but I'm going to try this. The council supports in the RFP the finish, the stage finish, and also be prepared to send a letter of support to the US Pro Cycling Challenge for that. So that's my motion.
I'll second it. Let's vote. Councilmember Bagley.
Again, it's fine. Again, it's all fine. But are we, I mean, finish sounds cool. But all right, we've been talking about this for 15 minutes. These guys are young ho bikers. We have no financial data, no nothing. We're going to close down our city and we're just going to go for it. That's what we're doing. Yippee ki-yay, let's go for it. All right, let's go for it.
Councilmember Santos?
Councilmember Bagley, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
This is coming back on the 13th when we pull it all together to give you that.
And the other thing is, and I hear this quite often, we will close down Main Street for anything.
Parade.
I hear that from residents. You will close down Main Street for anything. In fact, we're doing it this Saturday for Halloween Parade, which is a gr- I won't do this in council comments later. But we're going to close down Main Street for a Halloween Parade. So the kids are going to be out there in their, in their Halloween costumes. You know, this is going to be, you know, it's, yeah, is it going to be a big party? I hope so. But is, is the potential is there for a nice return of investment? I believe so as well.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yeah. And what I would expect that we could see on the 13th is some data from these other communities. And I, I know some councilmembers and mayors in these other communities, I'll be giving them a call and saying, you know, what are some pointers that, and I'll pass along any pointers they give me in conversations to you. But I guess again, I agree with councilmember Bagley, you know, we don't want it to be a boondoggle, you know, and we like to get that publicity. And we want to make sure people know that Longmont is just this much smaller than Boulder right now, and we're going to be this much bigger. And they should learn that they'll take second, second status to us soon enough. But I think that it's great to have it, have it finish here, too, with a festival on Main and would be fantastic.
Well, since this thing's only like two years old, maybe it would behoove us to contact Boulder and Golden and these other cities and go, what did you guys do right? What did you do wrong? What lessons did you learn? And get that information so we don't make the same mistakes that they did. Yeah, I think we're ready to vote now, all right. That passes seven to zero. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I guess we're at first call, public invited to be heard. Kathy Weber Harding, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Mayor Coombs and city council members, I'm Kathy Weber Harding, President/CEO of the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce, located at 528 Main Street. Tonight you'll be discussing the second reading for ordinance 2019-69 regarding the Twin Peaks Mall and approval of the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the mall area urban renewal project. The Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors encourages you to approve this ordinance tonight in order for Newmark Merrill and Allen Ginsberg to move forward with the redevelopment of the mall. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Strider Benston.
Mayor Coombs, City Council, I'm Strider Benston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I would like to acknowledge the passing of George McGovern two days ago. I met him a few years ago and it was quite an honor. We seem to be having a campaign for precedent right now, but one candidate has been very hard to find. For suddenly the person debating the president the last couple of weeks had never been seen before. Last night Governor Romney said he agreed with basically every one of the president's current policies and actions. So trying to find out what the governor actually stands for is like trying to nail Jell-O to a tree. We have witnessed here in Longmont in '09 and '11, a flood of about a half a million dollars into Longmont to block our citizens from the use of our own fiber optics. Today, we see nearly half a million dollars to abrogate our home rural and to prevent Longmont citizens from protecting our public health and safety from the, from the results that could ensue from the fracking industry. The public health studies have not been made. In fact, just this week, a major health study was begun at the University of Colorado. I'm not sure how long that's going to take, but they tend to take about two years to do a serious study. The health science is not yet in. But I want to point out something. Some of you are probably quite aware of Rocky Flats, the nuclear plutonium trigger maker here in Colorado, which operated for about 30 years with impunity. The FBI did an investigation in 1989, but the investigation was ambushed by the Justice Department, which suppressed all of the evidence of all of the cancers and all of the deformities. And then they tried to turn it into a recreation area with 700 tons of plutonium waste in the ground and in the groundwater. You need to read about this, the ambushed grand jury, because this documents precisely how that took place and the information that now 20 years later is starting to leak out, as well as the, the radioactivity in plutonium that leaked out into downtown Denver, Stanley Lake, and the entire eastward, windward surrounding community of Rocky Flats. Similar problems might very well result from fracking, especially those in or near any urban areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So you vote yes on 300.
Councilmember Santos? Oh, excuse me.
This is Gabe Santos.
Citizen Gabe Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Gabe Santos. I live at 1336 Walden Court. I'm speaking for myself as a resident of the city of Longmont. I would encourage voters in Longmont to vote no on ballot measure 300. A recent Denver Post editorial made several good reasons to reject this amendment to our city charter. Number one, Supreme Court has already ruled on a total ban of drilling. A total ban which included fracking. If 300 would pass, would ban fracking. Supreme Court has ruled, again, I'll state that again, the Supreme Court has already ruled on this. If 300 were to pass, the city of Longmont would have to buy the minerals to compensate the owners for those rights. As the previous speaker said, there have been a half a million dollars poured into this election. That's a kick in the bucket that what we as a city and as residents would have to pay for those mineral rights. It would cost, you know, my estimation, potentially tens of millions of dollars. And having seen the budget, I don't know if we have that type of reserve fund anywhere. Third, a ban is, a ban is not needed. The state of Colorado is already addressing setbacks, noise issues, and disclosure of fracking fluids. And the city of Longmont itself has an agreement with top operating to handle other aspects of environmental issues. Voters, please do not let false information and scare tactics influence you. For the, just get the facts. Governor Hickenlooper, a former geologist, has been quoted as saying, 6,000 wells, water wells, 650 oil wells, and they can't find fracking fluid in any of those wells or that water. None. It's a fact. It's a fact. That's the fact. Vote no on 300. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all signed up. So I guess we'll end first call, public invited to be heard. And look, would you like to come forward? Well, I'll give it a shot.
Mayor?
Yes.
Point of order. I don't see Paul Tiger's name on that list, and we have been consistent the last several weeks and several months with this new council. If you have not put your name on the list, you can speak at final call, public invited to be heard. To make an exception now, we would need to make an exception and not get to our business from here on out.
Okay. I guess I have to agree with that because that's the policy we've been following. So can you wait till the end or speak at any public hearing items?
Mayor Coombs, the first item for second reading, public hearing, are your budget ordinances. There are five of them, so I'm going to read all of the titles into the record at one time. Ordinance 2012-62 is a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the city of Longmont for the year 2012 to pay budgeted city expenses for the 2013 fiscal year. The second one is ordinance 2012-63, a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the Longmont Downtown Development District for the year 2012 to pay budgeted expenses of the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for the 2013 fiscal year. Ordinance 2012-64 is a bill for an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Longmont for the year 2013. Ordinance 2012-65 is a bill for an ordinance making appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2013. And the last one is ordinance 2012-66, a bill for an ordinance amending Longmont Municipal Code 14.50.070 to extend for one year the fee for park and greenway maintenance. And you will need to take separate action on each of these ordinances, but you can hold one public hearing.
Okay. I guess I'll open the public hearing on the ordinances 02012-62 through 66. Is there anyone that would like to speak on any of these issues? I guess seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos, you may add move ordinance 2012-62. All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Whit?
I'd like to move ordinance 2012-63.
Okay, let's vote. Councilmember Santos? Oh, the vote is seven to zero. Excuse me, it was seven to zero on both of them. Councilmember Santos? Okay.
Councilmember Santos? Thank you, Mayor. I've been talking with councilmember Levinson on 64. Get to the right area. I would like to move ordinance 2012-64 with the exception of the Longmont Symphony funding.
Second.
Okay, let's vote on that. Do you have a word on this right now? Levinson? Okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll look to the city attorney. Can we go ahead and separate 65 for councilmember Levinson, then come back and, okay, thank you. Mayor, I would move ordinance 2012-65 without the Longmont Symphony Orchestra funding.
Okay, let's vote on that. That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to be excused and recuse myself from the voting on the Longmont Symphony Orchestra funding.
All right. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give councilmember Levinson just a minute. She didn't have to run. Thank you, Mayor. I would move ordinance 2012-65 with the portion of the Longmont Symphony Orchestra funding. 64, excuse me, 64.
Okay, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes six to zero with councilmember Levinson absent. Councilmember Santos?
You may. I would move ordinance 2012-65, the portion of the Longmont Symphony Orchestra funding.
Okay, let's vote on that. We're going to miss down our science. That passes six to zero with councilmember Levinson absent. Councilmember Finley?
I'd like to move passage of ordinance 2012-66.
Second.
Okay, councilmember, let's vote on that. That passes seven to zero.
Hey, the next item on your second reading in public hearings is ordinance 2012-67, which is a bill for an ordinance amending Title 14, Chapter 14.08 of the Longmont Municipal Code on sewer rates. There is no staff presentation, but we do have staff in the audience to answer questions.
I want to recuse myself from this just so there's no conflict of interest because, you know, the new sewer rates are very favorable to restaurant owners, so I'll step out.
Hold on a second, I'm going to look at my screen for a second. Sixty-seven. All right. Yeah, I'm getting, yeah, get to that, just going to get the form here. I will open the public hearing for 2000, ordinance 2012-67. I don't see anyone that's on, has asked to speak. Is there anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor Protown. I'd like to move ordinance 2012-67 for approval.
It's been moved as second. And councilmember Whit?
I just want to let people know that I did receive several phone calls regarding this, following the article that was in the newspaper today, and folks who are not happy about us not having $41 million set aside already to pay for this. So just so you know, there are individuals who would have preferred that we had saved this money up prior to needing to do the improvements. I feel that I see this as a I feel that I see this as a major purchase, and it's very difficult to save about forty-one million dollars as a municipal government, and so I have no problem with it.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. And I know staff is here. Can somebody from staff step down and give us some indication of how many years it would take us to accumulate the amount of money, and how many years we have to implement the improvements to meet the standards or get fined?
Members of council, Mayor Protam Santos, Dale Rademacher, Director of Public Works and National Resources, you know, that's sort of a hypothetical question, but we have to have the work done by 2016. And Councilmember Whit, you make a good point. If we were to have accumulated that money over time, I think the public would reasonably also ask the question, "Why are you accumulating so much money?" And so, it is sort of a difficult thing. What we are trying to do is increase rates over time, so it's not rate shock all in one year. So, it is over a five-year period, albeit it is a significant rate increase. It's not one that we are minimizing. It's one that we think we take very serious, and we intend to do very good work on behalf of the citizens to upgrade this treatment plant to continue to perform.
Dale, also, the requirements for the standard that we must meet by 2016, it's like, not like we could have predicted this ten years ago and started squirreling away little bits of money. Can you, for the benefit of the public out there in TV land, let them know, and us, reiterate what we've heard before around that issue of the standards we must meet and when they were set, and what they were prior, perhaps?
Mayor Protam Santos and Councilmember Levison, the new regulations came in place with our recently renewed permit that we received, I believe, in 2011. Twenty-eleven, so we received a permit. The levels of ammonia that we're able to discharge into the river were reduced dramatically. And Cal can come up and give you the actual data and the actual numbers if you're interested in that, but the point is, they were lowered dramatically. Our plant is not designed to meet those limits. Had we built a plant to meet those limits fifteen or twenty years ago, it would have been reaching its useful life right now, and you would have been needing to replace it. I believe it's best and most appropriate to meet the regulations when they come online and have facilities ready to meet them, not to prematurely build them, but to build them at the right time, when the permits and the state and federal requirements require it.
Dale, Councilmember Whit, hold on one second, please. Dale, we're not going to the ratepayers for all forty-one million dollars, are we?
That's correct, Mayor Protam Santos. A good chunk of this, and I don't have that exact number in my head, the bond, the amount of debt servicing is around twenty-eight million out of a forty-one million dollar project, so a good chunk of it is coming from cash that is being generated from the rates.
Well, and having toward the wastewater treatment plant, there's a couple of buildings that are, that are in the, from the fifties, if I'm not mistaken.
They date back to that era, everything from the fifties up until the nineteen eighties that are in need of replacement.
And as I talked to a business owner today, I did mention that I would rather, you know, this is a long-term investment for this community, for the potential build-out, not looking at the next five to ten years, this is a further, you know, yeah, definitely a window further out for the next fifty years. So, hopefully, the parts that we put in this new plant will be, will hold out longer as some of those other older ones.
Certainly like to see that we get the same return on that investment as we have over the years. And we believe with good maintenance and care, we have an excellent staff that does that day in and day out. I don't have any reason to believe we won't.
Thank you. Councilmember Whit.
I did mention to some of these people that perhaps we could raise the rates a little bit more and start squirreling away some money for the improvements in fifteen years, and that didn't go over very well.
That was my point, right.
Yeah, so, anyway, it's, it is a lot of money, it is an increase, and it's a bad time to do it, but we really have no options, so I'll be supporting this.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Santos. Dale, I had called you earlier today because it looked to me like different categories of users were being either increased or decreased at a rate that was not equal, and you explained to me how it was equal. Could you explain that for the folks out there?
Mayor Protam Santos and City Council and Councilmember Finley, I will, and thank you to give me that opportunity. The, in particular, on the single-family, multifamily, and small commercial ratepayers, today they all pay the same, staff always gives me this data, now I got to look at it, they all pay the same rate today. And by the rate, I mean the volume charge, the per-thousand-dollar volume charge. As we go forward in time, they will still pay the same rate across those customer classes. The volume rate charge is increasing at a greater rate than the monthly service charge, and that's why there's a differential between, say, a small commercial or a multifamily than it is a single family. However, as I, as we talked this afternoon, Councilmember Finley, if you have a small business on Main Street that has one or two restrooms and uses a similar amount of water as a single-family resident, their rate increases to be the same, because the math is that it is the same dollar per thousand for all the customers. What we're doing this time around is we are also equating at the same time and bringing into the same rate, fast foods and restaurants, and that does give some relief to, in particular to restaurants, which were previously paying a significantly higher volume rate charge, but that our studies that we've done here in Longmont show that that is not something that we believe to be appropriate or something that we should continue going forward. So, that's why there's a little difference, actually a significant difference, between the impact on restaurants and fast foods.
Okay, Councilmember Levison.
Yes, Dale, can you give us some indication? One of my many questions I asked in one sentence was, "What are the consequences? Should we not do these needed improvements to meet the regulatory standard?" I mean, on the, on the one side, we're making a big investment. If we don't make the big investment, how big's the bill going to be? Any guesstimate?
I'm going to let Cal answer that.
The regulator guy.
Cal Youngberg, Environmental Service.
Are there lots of zeros behind it?
Lots of zeros, lots of zeros. Actually, EPA has the ability to fine twenty-five thousand dollars per day of violation. That means, once you're out of compliance, they have that ability. The state can also tack onto that fine, their ability, I think, is ten thousand dollars. The other consequence, though, is that if it's, if it is delayed, what would probably happen is we would get a compliance schedule imposed by the state. So, the state at that point would be in the control, in the control of our destiny rather than us doing it ourselves. And they would say, "Thou shall meet this date," and it'd probably be pretty quick. It'd probably be quicker than what we're talking about now, just by meeting something by 2016.
Which would probably, if we didn't have the information lined up to do a bond election, we'd have to do it pretty darn quick, but still accumulating fines every single day until we could get a bond passed and get the, at least push them off with saying, "We've got the money in line, and we're going to start the improvements." I mean, are there any contingency plans if, you know, you end up in that situation? Do they, like, lessen the fines if they know you're working on it, or?
Yeah, Mayor Protam and Councilmember Levison, there's always some consideration by the state and EPA with regard to how quickly you're moving and what kind of good faith you're showing, but you're still going to end up with a penalty, probably in addition to having to build the facilities, anyway.
And then we would lose control over our own destiny, as you put it.
That's correct.
Yes, thank you very much.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you. I move that we adopt ordinance two thousand twelve dash sixty-seven.
If I'm not mistaken, we already have a motion? Do we? All right, then I call the question. I don't hear a second for the question, but don't we have to vote?
Yep.
He was true. All right, let's vote on the original motion to approve the ordinance. It's all right. Technology. Oop, hold on a second. I probably should not be voting for Mayor Coombs. Can you take that? Okay, if you'll record it correctly, Valerie, I'm right here, just blinking at me. Passes six to zero with Mayor Coombs absent. So, we'll just wait for the mayor.
Well, we're waiting for the mayor, just to point out something on the, on the fine issue. It's cumulative.
Right.
So, if you get written up for one thing, it stays on your record, and then if you get written up for something else, then you kind of become the bad actor, and so it's not like you get written up individually. Is that correct, Cal?
Thank you, Dale, thank you, Cal. This moment of silence brought to you by the Longmont Public Library. You belong at the library. Okay. Yes, it did, Mayor.
Mayor, the next item on your agenda is ordinance two thousand twelve sixty-eight, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter fourteen point three-six of the Longmont Municipal Code, does that interim park impact fees? We do not have a staff presentation on this, but Kim Sugar is here if you have questions.
Okay. Is there any questions of City Council before I open it up to public? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Whit.
I would like to move ordinance two thousand twelve dash sixty-eight.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to one with Councilmember Levison descending.
Next item on your agenda is ordinance two thousand twelve sixty-nine, a bill for an ordinance making certain legislative findings and approving the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Twin Peaks Small Urban Renewal Project. And Brad Powers is here.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Brad Power, I'm the Director of the Economic Development Department. We're dealing with a fairly large and complex redevelopment project of the scale of Twin Peaks Mall. You tend to pass certain milestones, and this evening before you, for your consideration, is one of the fairly significant milestones associated with the redevelopment of the property, and that's the adoption, the consideration of the adoption of the amended urban renewal plan, which will essentially serve as the framework document for the future actions that will be completed to redevelop the project area and hopefully set it on a very good pace for a prosperous and long and positive future. So, based on that, if you'll indulge us this evening, we are going to present to you and to the community a little bit of a summary about where we've been, what the urban renewal plan entails, and what's immediately ahead in terms of the project schedule, and I'll turn it over to David Starr, who's our Redevelopment Program Manager, to provide the rest of the
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I have a brief presentation to kind of give you an update on where we're at in terms of the Twin Peaks Mall redevelopment project. So, reinvestment in the mall and future redevelopment of this vital community asset has been a consistent topic of interest and discussion among residents, business owners, and the community at large for several years now. While a variety of factors is contributing to the decline of the center as we know it, an opportunity has been presented to move forward with the transformation of this aging shopping center to a new redeveloped retail center that offer a variety of retail formats, including large-scale shopping, small-scale shops and restaurants, and a variety of entertainment options, which will help the center to thrive well into the future. In two thousand nine, as you know, the mall property and the surrounding commercial area was designated as an urban renewal district, which in Colorado allows for specialized public financing assistance for project-related public improvements that remove blighting conditions. Due to a variety of circumstances, reinvestment in the mall by the previous owner did not take place, and the mall has continued to struggle as the economy works to right itself. In two thousand twelve, the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority received a proposal that would redevelop Twin Peaks Mall and eliminate conditions of blight. To move this project forward, the city of Longmont and the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority are partnering with the mall owner to facilitate the redevelopment of the mall. One of the key actions is this proposed amended and restated Twin Peaks Mall Urban Renewal Plan. This plan would replace the original plan, which was adopted in two thousand nine, and includes the authorization of tax increment financing provisions, which is key to move forward. This amended plan includes an updated condition survey and Boulder County impact report, both of which have been completed and are in your package according to Colorado Urban Renewal Law. The Twin Peaks Mall Area Condition Survey updates the original survey, which was completed in two thousand seven, updated in two thousand nine as part of the adopted plan back then. The purpose of this condition survey or blight study is to analyze current conditions within a defined survey area in order to determine whether factors contributing to blight are present under the provisions of the Colorado Urban Renewal Statute. In this updated condition survey, ten out of eleven possible qualifying blight conditions were found in the urban renewal as a project as a whole in the updated survey. This urban renewal plan also includes a Boulder County impact report, which outlines the anticipated impact of the potential use of tax increment finance as a key method to implement the Twin Peaks Mall Urban Renewal Plan. This impact report was submitted to Boulder County on September seventh, two thousand All property owners, business owners, and residents located within the urban renewal area received notification of tonight's public hearing. Boulder County and the Saint Vane Valley School District have provided copies of the proposed amended and restated Twin Peaks Mall Urban Renewal Plan Condition Survey and Impact Report. The Saint Vane Valley School District Board adopted a resolution in support of the project on October tenth, two thousand twelve. The planning commission passed a resolution on September nineteenth that determined that the amended and restated Twin Peaks Mall Urban Renewal Plan is consistent with the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan. Over the next few months, city staff will continue to work on the mall owner on the public-private partnership, which includes finalizing a redevelopment agreement with the mall owner and assisting in the entitlement and development review process as the project moves forward. Following negotiations of the redevelopment agreement, it will be submitted for review and approval to the urban renewal authority, which comprises members of the city council. Tonight, city council options include approving the ordinance for adopting the plan, two, approving ordinance with amendments, or three, do not approving the ordinance. City staff recommendation is to approve the ordinance as submitted, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have now or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, David. See any questions, so I guess I'll go ahead and open this for the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmember Samori.
I would move ordinance two thousand twelve sixty-nine.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Okay, passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is, there are two, actually, two things, two ordinances on top operating mineral lease and lease ratifications. The first one is ordinance two thousand twelve seventy, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the mineral estates of the real property known as the Lower Adrian, Custer, and Northern Shores properties to top operating company. And the second one is ordinance two thousand twelve seventy-one, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to ratify the leases of the mineral estates of the real property known as the Peshaw and Collins properties to top operating company. You will need to take separate action on both of these ordinance, but can have one public hearing. And Brad Skoll is here.
Good morning, Brad. Evening, Mayor Coombs and members of the city council. My name is Brad Skoll, Planning Manager. As Valerie has indicated to you, you have two items before you this evening to take action on. I'll make a presentation on both of those at the same time, and I think you can probably handle your public hearing for the both of these at the same time also. Council will remember that in July, you executed a master contract and operating agreement with top operating oil company, in which the city and top agreed to a consolidated drilling plan on city-owned property, where top held some leases and where top proposed to lease some property. Eleven drill sites were identified through that process on city property, where there could have been maybe three or four times as many well sites. These are consolidated sites. So, as a part of implementing the master contract agreement, this evening we have before you three new leases and two lease ratifications. First lease, and there's a graphic, I think Valerie wants to put it on the board, that will give you a general idea of the location of these properties. The first property is the, is the Lower Adrian property. It's a hundred and thirty-three acres, which is located north of Weld County Road twenty-sixth. It's a road that should take out to the, to Union Reservoir, and it's also east of County Line Road. That property is owned by the city. The proposal is to lease it to top. There is a twelve and a half percent There is a 12 and a half percent royalty interest. That royalty was previously reserved to other property owners. The city would not receive the royalty on that. Uh, however, there is an $800 signing bonus, $800 per acre signing bonus, in which the city would, uh, get approximately $106,000 that would be credited to the royalty account, which is a financial instrument that's created in conjunction with the master contract. Uh, additionally, you notice I can just go on with the technology just happening, it doesn't matter. Uh, the Custer property is a 75-acre piece of property which is located immediately south of Union Reservoir. And, hm, Lower Adrian was over in this corner, and the Custer is next to that. Uh, that's again a 75-acre property. The, uh, there is a consolidated well site location on this property. Uh, the royalty would be 16% uh, to the City of Longmont paid to the royalty account. Uh, $800 at 75 dollars, 75 acres rather, would be about $60,000 as a signing bonus on that one. The Northern Shores, uh, lease is for three properties north of, uh, Union Reservoir, shown on the graphic. The, uh, the largest of the properties is the Smith property, and that's where the, uh, the consolidated well would be located. Um, that's the largest of the three. The other two properties, the Keltner and the Mountain Shores properties, would be non-disturbance properties. Uh, together, they are 106 acres, 16% royalty to the city, uh, $85,000 signing bonus for that one. So that's, uh, an overview on the leases, and if the council doesn't have any questions, I'll just jump to the ratifications.
Okay.
I know this is interesting. So the lease ratifications are a little bit different animal. They are, um, confirming existing leases that have, uh, been on, uh, these two properties for a number of years, but because of some discrepancies in, uh, in title, and because of, uh, uh, some of the property associated with the, uh, the Collins holdings has been through foreclosure and different deeds of trust, um, the method of ratification is a process in which the city and top both affirm the existing lease. We don't go through a new lease on this or set new, uh, set new conditions. So the, uh, the first ratification that's, uh, proposed, uh, for the council is a 132-acre, uh, property which is south of the Saint Vane River and east of County Line Road, and it's in this crosshatch right here. Uh, when council looked at the, uh, the packet, you probably saw that that was a, a lease from Kim and Carol Collins, and that was done in 1982. Uh, because of some, uh, some foreclosure and deeds of trust that have occurred on the surface estate, um, it's not abundantly clear that, uh, that the lease, mineral lease is completely intact, and top and the city have agreed to go through a ratification process or reaffirm that the lease, uh, is, is adequate. It's a 12 and a half percent royalty rate. In this particular instance, uh, the city and Boulder County own the surface estate 50% in, uh, in joint ownership. And, uh, so the city is ratifying its 50% in this. Uh, Boulder County has not objected. We've advised them that we are, uh, going through the ratification process, and, uh, and again Boulder County hasn't objected to that. So that would be a situation where there is an existing lease, there's no lease signing bonus royalties, for the 50% of the mineral estate revenue would accrue to the royalty account. And then finally, uh, the 44-acre Collins property, which is located just adjacent to the, uh, the northeastern portion of the Pechel property, uh, the city recently acquired that, uh, earlier this, this year in June. Uh, because of the title transfers and, uh, and the fact that it was in a family trust, we felt that this was appropriate to ratify this lease as well, uh, between the city as it's passed from, uh, Calvin Petroleum ultimately to top. Uh, in this particular instance, as with Pechel, the lease terms are for non-disturbance, which means that, uh, there would be no oil and gas activity occurring on the surface of the property. Uh, the royalty rate, uh, for the Pechel ratification is 16 and 2/3 percent. So council, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Uh, if not, you could move to your public hearing.
Okay, I don't see any questions, so I'll open this up to the public hearing on both items. Uh, anybody from the public like to speak at this time?
Paul Tiger 452 Dixon. I, I think I'd, I'd like a point of clarification first. Are all of these leases non-disturbance, or is it, uh, are some of them going to have wellheads on them? Brad?
Yeah.
Uh, that's what I was just trying to find out, because I, I'm sorry, I, I... Brad?
No, we'll ask him after you.
Oh, oh, got it, thank you. Uh, my, uh, my issue here is, is that what I wanted to point out to, uh, to everyone who might be listening as well, is that, uh, the, the leases aren't, uh, leases from an owner. The owner, well, there is an owner, yes. The owner is us, the government. The government is the people. Uh, we're not going to separate them, so it's the people that are leasing these, uh, fracking, or oil, or, uh, uh, any kind of, uh, mining. Uh, it's, city is leasing these properties. Uh, and I wanted to know, I mean, I didn't really have a big objection if they're non-disturbance, but I certainly do have an objection, uh, if there are wellheads on those properties. Um, and that's fine.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, just, excuse me, yeah, we just still got the public hearing going. Anybody else like to speak at this time on public hearing? I guess I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Brad, would you step off, because, um, I think that those of us who spent, like, hours of our lives reading these this week, um, can you go through the list of, of how the consolidations of the drilling pads are occurring on these sites, is which ones are going to have a disturbance and which will not, just for the benefit of, of the question from Mr. Tiger, and also for the benefit of those in the TV land audience?
Uh, yes, Mayor, council. The, uh, Valerie put the graphic back up on the board, and, uh, um, not all of the, uh, the city-owned properties are, are captured, uh, in this. However, I might just, uh, if you would go around the horn with me, starting at the Smith property, that property has a consolidated well site on it, which will be accessing bottom holes under Union Reservoir, as well as leases that top have on the Keltner and the Mountain Shores property. The Bogot property, uh, going counterclockwise, is owned by the city. It's a little over 80 acres. It has an existing oil and gas well on it, uh, which would be the location of a new consolidated well, and that would be reaching multiple bottom holes, both east and west of the property. Uh, the Upper Adrian property here is, uh, proposed to have a well site on it. There is already a well site that has been permitted by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. That would be a consolidated well site that would locate, or that would access bottom holes under Union Reservoir, as well as approximately 15 bottom holes that are located off-site and would be directionally bored to properties that top owns the mineral rights on, that are east, well, rather, west of County Line Road and north of Ninth Avenue. Part of the, uh, Upper Adrian well site would include the relocated Ryder well site, uh, which is, uh, part of the master contract and also part of the agreement for purchase later on. Uh, Lower Adrian property has a consolidated well site on it as well, in the lower bottom area, and a, uh, facilities area for, uh, tanks, combined tank storage. Uh, the Custer property has a consolidated well site on it. Pet Rock property has another consolidated well site on it, that's, uh, city-owned property. The Lindberg property is a small, uh, fat five-acre parcel, which is located right there, and subject to a potential acquisition, uh, approved this evening. That would be non-disturbance. Um, and then the city owns a, a large amount of property on the west, rather, east side of the Union Reservoir. It includes Haley French, the Herner property, French, and then the Hartman property. And there are two well locations in which, uh, minerals under Union Reservoir would be accessed by those. Uh, south of Highway 119, uh, the situation is comparable, there would be three loc- There would be one on Sandstone Ranch, uh, and it would be accessing developed areas of Sandstone Ranch, as well as possibly some of the, uh, mineral rights that top owns under, uh, what's probably known as the Walmart property. Uh, in addition, there's an Evans Well location, which would be consolidating an, an existing well operation, uh, down in this area. And then finally, on Sherwood, there's a, a location, uh, near an existing wellhead facility that would be accessing the Sherwood, rather, the Pechel properties and other minerals that, uh, gas and oil minerals that top have leased in this particular area. So there are 11 drill sites, uh, total, um, scattered over probably 1,000 acres or more of city property. Um, there was quite a bit of time spent, uh, with the team negotiating, uh, the fewest well sites possible, uh, with top, and to create the least amount of disruption. Each one of these well sites, uh, does meet the city's regulations for a 750-foot voluntary setback from occupied structures, as well as, uh, the 300-foot setback from any waterway or riparian area. So if that answered your question, Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Brad. Councilmember Witt?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we have all been working on this for a long time, and obviously staff and, um, top operating have really worked hard to come up with, uh, this agreement that, uh, respects the desires of Longmont residents to keep, uh, oil and gas operations away from homes, and, um, so because of that, I would like to move ordinance 2012 dash 70.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to thank, uh, Brad and, and the people you're working with, uh, who've worked out these, um, great leases, and, uh, you've done an awesome job keeping those well sites away from residents and, and, uh, meeting our wishes. I did want to, this is kind of a pet peeve of mine, there's some typos in the lease. Page 191, there's some words that are smushed together, and also on page 192, um, and just if you could get those corrected before they're signed, that'd be great.
Okay, you want to make a motion? Or, I mean, do you want to make, vote then? Excuse me. Councilmember Gagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, I've expressed all these sentiments before, but, uh, I also want to, uh, give my hats off to city staff and top operating. Um, these, and also what's coming up in 9, uh, F, is an example of how government is supposed to work, meaning that you've got two different sides, very heated issue, and you had people coming together, finding good, common sense, middle ground, win-win for everybody. And I don't know what the future's going to hold, given Amendment 300, and given what's going to happen in November, but I'm going to vote for this because this was good government. This was good private business. This was people coming together and figuring out how to keep concerns, or how to resolve concerns, keep them away from homes and schools, and at the same time respecting the property rights of surface and mineral rights owners. And I don't know what's going to happen, but this is what was supposed to happen. I'm going to vote for it.
All right, that's about it. Okay, it passes seven to zero. Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to move ordinance 2012 dash 71.
Okay, it passes seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance 2000, it's actually two ordinances, the Fairgrounds Marketplace Annexation. The first one is ordinance 2012-72, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Fairgrounds Marketplace Annexation, generally located south of Rogers Road and west of Hoover Street, and zoning the property CR, regional commercial. The second ordinance is, oh, I'm sorry, it's a resolution, is Resolution 2012-91, finding a parcel of land known as Fairgrounds Marketplace eligible for annexation. And I believe Don Burchett has a short presentation.
Great, Don.
Mayor Coombs, member, council, Don Burchett, with Economic Development Department. And as Valerie introduced, um, we do have two items for you to consider tonight. I would recommend, first, uh, if it is at the council's pleasure, to review and vote on the resolution first, as that finds compliance with the state regulations for annexing. And then, if you are so inclined, to vote on the ordinance, which would approve the annexation ordinance and the annexation agreement for the property. Uh, briefly, the property's 27 acres in size. It's located at the southwest corner generally of, uh, Hoover Road and Rogers Road. It's, abuts the Home Depot property to the north of that property along Hoover Road. The applicant has requested that this property be zoned regional commercial, uh, which is our CR zoning district. That is in compliance with the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan designation for this property, which is also regional commercial. Um, the concept plan generally depicts commercial development, uh, to occur on the property. At this time, there is no specific site plan, other than to show the required, uh, connections to Hoover, Hoover, with Collector Streets, both going through the property east-west and along the west property boundary going north-south by connection in that neighborhood. Uh, this property, or this proposal, was reviewed by the City of Longmont Planning and Zoning Commission. At their meeting, they voted seven to zero to recommend approval to the City Council on this annexation. Uh, we also did our required notices. We had, uh, one person who spoke, uh, at a neighborhood meeting, um, not in favor of the annexation with some concerns. And then we have also had just one con, uh, person con-, comment to us, uh, through the notices, uh, with concern about, uh, encroachment of City of Longmont into Boulder County rural residential areas. Uh, so that is all of the comments that we have had. Again, if, uh, the council's so inclined, we would recommend you take action on resolution first, and then the ordinance second. And if you have any specific requests for information, I can answer that for you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd move Resolution 2012.
Oh, we, we have to have a hearing?
It's resolution first, the public hearing is for the ord-, of the ordinance. So I would move Resolution 2012 dash 91.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. Eugene, resolutions do not require a public hearing, do they?
That's my understanding.
Mayor and council, Eugene Nice, City Attorney. Generally, council resolutions do not. I believe there's a statutory requirement for a public hearing on a, uh, annexation resolution, finding statutory compliance.
Resolution, so, okay.
I guess I'll open the public hearing then at this point. Is there anybody? I think we've got, uh, Richard, uh, Cabell signed up.
Mayor Coombs, uh, City Council, Rich Gagely, uh, National Development, Longmont Partners. Uh, reside at 321 10th Street in Hermosa Beach, but, uh, feel like I'm a Longmont local, as I've been involved with this property for over six years. Um, thanks to Don for recapping, uh, the project. We feel it's a, a logic, logical extension- We feel it's a logical extension of the Hover Road retail corridor. We are committed to work closely with you, the city staff, residents, to bring a desired tenant mix and design to the project. Annexation approval will bring valued services, new jobs, additional tax revenues to Longmont. So on behalf of the Haley family, the Ishmael family, who are the owners of the property, we're asking for your approval on the annexation. So thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you so much. Is there anybody else that would have any questions for this gentleman? Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this public hearing?
Bringing time, Mr. Dr. Benston, 951, 17th Avenue. I haven't been, wasn't aware of this coming up, and I would just like information. Is this the same parcel that was considered for Sunflower Foods a couple of years ago? Because it seems like there was a long issue, and they were going to do it, and were going to annex it, and then they backed out, and then maybe it dropped at that point. So I would just like clarification of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that is the location.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Eugene? Your mic's still on, so do you have a comment? Okay. Any other people who'd like to speak on public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Witt.
I would like to move Resolution 2012-89.
Yes, 89. Is that the right number?
Oh, no.
91. 91.
I scrolled down. I do that a lot. I think I need a new iPad. I would move Resolution 2012-91.
Second. Okay. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to move ordinance 2012-72.
Second. Councilmember Levison.
Yes. Don, I had just a quick question that I read something that I don't remember reading in other annexation agreements, is something about the, it would be page 237 of our packet, which is page two of the, I guess it's actually 240 of the packet, but page two of the annexation agreement, it says that under 1.3, that if the owner cannot acquire off-site easements or right-of-way necessary to develop, the owner may request the city's assistance in acquiring easements or right-of-way with the city's use of eminent domain. Would we, is that standard boilerplate? And would we ever, in this kind of circumstance, entertain eminent domain? Because I know in the past, there have been some discussions on this particular parcel around access issues to the west end of it.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, this is a standard language in all of our annexation agreements that I've seen the last 13 years. As to whether or not the city would use eminent domain, I think it says that we could, and it would ultimately come back to the council, is my understanding, to decide whether to make that use of your power or not. So it would come back to you.
Okay. And I just wanted to confirm that, and I'm not necessarily in favor of using an eminent domain at every turn that we can. So just glad to note that that's boilerplate and doesn't give us any tip one way or another in this particular situation.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Next item on your agenda is ordinance 2012-73, a bill for an ordinance amending chapters 2.40 and 14.05 of the Longmont Municipal Code to streamline development applications on land already meeting the raw water requirement policy. And we do not have a staff presentation on this, but there are members in the audience to answer questions.
Okay. Is there any questions for council before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'll open this for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd move ordinance 2012-73.
Second. All right, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Next item is a bill for, 2012-74, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Adrian Property to Alan Seawald. And there's no staff presentation on this.
Okay, any questions for council before I open this up to public hearing? I guess seeing no one, I'll open this to public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Witt.
I would like to move ordinance 2012-74.
Second. All right, let's vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. Let's take a 10-minute break.
Resume the meeting?
So I guess...
Are you ready for your next consent?
Yeah, I guess we're for...
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
Item 9A is ordinance 2012-75, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2012. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for November 13th. Item 9B is ordinance 2012-76, a bill for an ordinance amending Title 14, Chapter 14.48 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Broadband Services. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for November 13th. Ordinance 2012-77, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Airport Road Annexation generally located along Airport Road between 17th Avenue and Rogers Road and zoning the property P. Public and G.I. General Industrial. Public hearing and second readings on this ordinance is scheduled for December 4th, 2012. Item 9D is ordinance 2012-78, a public hearing for an ordinance amending Section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code adopting amended and restated pension plans. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for November 13th, 2012. Item 9E is the 2013 Budget Resolutions. The first one is Resolution 2012-88, amending the financial policies of the City of Longmont for 2013. The second one is Resolution 2012-89, approving the 2013 classification and pay plan for city employees. Item 9F is Resolution 2012-90, a resolution of the City of Longmont to purchase the Ryder and Lindberg properties. Item 9G is approve the Gateway Business Improvement District 2013 Operating Plan and Budget. And item 9H is Resolution 2012-92, finding that the petition for annexation of parcels of land located in Boulder County, State of Colorado, known as the Airport Road Annexation, generally located along Airport Road between 17th Avenue and Rogers Road substantially complies with the Colorado revised statutes section. Staff does not have any items that they need to pull from the consent agenda.
Councilmember Whit.
I would like to move the consent agenda.
Councilmember Bagley.
Just a quick question before I pull something. What's the process for a regular council member asking for an executive session?
Just make a motion? And a basis?
The thing is that my concern, I mean, the reason why I want to have an executive session is we're going to be passing a consent agenda that includes EF, or I'm sorry, 9F. And so we've got a surface use agreement, and we have an agreement with TOP Operating. And so in the event that 300 passes in November, I want to know what's going to happen to our agreement, what happens. I mean, actually, I'd like to pull mine F because we have a timeline, and what's going to happen? So I'd like to pull it. I just need to know what's going to happen.
Councilmember Whit.
I would like to amend my motion to move consent agenda minus item F.
Okay, that's been moved to second. Let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So I guess my question for you, Mr. May, is do we need to have an executive session, in your opinion, to discuss what we need to do? If you look at the packet, 9F talks about things occurring in December. And if ballot measure 300 passes, then where are we at? Have you guys thought about that at all? Would you rather do that in an executive session? Do you want to have the discussion now? What do you want?
Mayor and council, it's Eugene May, City Attorney. I want what you want, Councilmember Bagley. So, a couple of things I think we're going to discuss later on, potentially rescheduling one of the city council regular sessions for potentially October, November 8th. And if Amendment 300 were to pass, I was thinking that we would have an executive session that day, or the day to that meeting, to discuss the implications then. If we were to discuss the potential impacts in public meeting, I'd ask for council to waive attorney-client privilege before that discussion. And we can certainly have an executive session now to receive legal advice from the city attorney.
I don't know if that's necessarily now. I guess the other question is, well, I guess maybe I'm asking for legal advice. So like, is there anything we can do to maintain the surface use agreement in the event 300 passes? I mean, like, ex post facto, you've got an agreement, we've passed laws, we've passed ordinances, bam, another one comes into place? You can't just kind of retroactively say, oh, you know, now you're in trouble since... Is there anything we can do? What I don't want to see happen is all our hard work unravel.
Well, during the negotiation of the master contract and the operator agreement with TOP Operating, they were well aware of the petition going forward. I think they've taken measures in their interests, to protect their interests, and the city has evaluated some of the contingencies. But until Election Day comes and goes, and we know what happens with the amendment, we can't really look for exactly what will transpire. Certainly, State of Colorado has stated that they'd be looking to bring another lawsuit against the city if that were to pass. And so, you know, we would react to what happens around us.
But specifically, what happens to our agreement with, I mean, what happens to the agreement we have with TOP Operating in the event 300 passes?
In my opinion, it would remain in effect. I mean, it's about transactions, it's about well locations.
So we're just kind of all stuck?
We would move forward. I mean, there's a lot of contingencies. If the state were to sue us, and successfully sue us, then Amendment 300 would be unenforceable, and things could proceed if we were successful, and I'm not quite sure what's all going to happen.
Okay. So anyway, basically, it sounds like we're going to hang tight until November. So I'm just going to move that we pass 9F.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. I read some of the details in the agreement were saying things like, and I have to go and look exactly at the same page, at the exact page, but in general, that anything that would not allow TOP to execute or start leveraging their rights to extract minerals, that clock that starts ticking, the three-year, the five-year clock, would just keep moving out in the future at infinitum, is what I read in some of the agreements. So that, you know, the time, for example, there is a time clock that says you have to start doing something within three years, five years, whatever. But the other part of that says that if there's any other action or any circumstance that prevents that, you just keep adding the amount of time onto the end. So it could be 99 years from now. That seems to be a favorite number these days.
Ninety-nine years?
Yeah, could be ninety-nine, you know, a lot of discussion. I do, I do, Councilmember Santos would enjoy that comment. But realistically, it just keeps adding the time, and it doesn't, from what I read and interpreted, it doesn't actually suspend their rights at all, it just adds on the time where they still have to access the minerals. And I don't know if Mr. May, you're looking for that in the agreements, but I had a whole bunch of that highlighted. But I don't think that it really, I think we'll just have to wait until we get the election result, because who knows?
Okay, the motion's been first and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. I guess we're at the general business.
Okay, and you will need a motion to recess as the Longmont City Council.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that we recess as the Longmont City Council and reconvene as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One.
Okay, let's vote on that.
Oh, I didn't stop your last one. Hold on, now.
Okay, that passes seven to zero, so we're no longer in city council mode, but we're in the Longmont General Improvement District Board.
And the first item on your agenda is Resolution LGID 2012-05, fixing and levying taxes on the real and personal property within the Longmont General Improvement District Number One for the year 2012 to pay budget expenses of the district for the 2013 fiscal year.
Does someone want to make a motion on resolution? Councilmember Whit.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move Resolution LGID-2012-05.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Councilmember Whit.
Oh, John, I died first.
I'm sorry. The next item is Resolution LGID 2012-06, resolution of the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District adopting the annual budget for the district for the fiscal year 2013.
Councilmember Whit.
I would like to move Resolution LGID 2012-6.
Okay, let's vote. Councilmember Santos. Excuse me, just in queue here. Okay, that passes seven to zero. All right, Councilmember Santos.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Longmont General Improvement District Number One and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
Okay, let's vote.
I just messed up. Hang on a second.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, so now it's time for final call. Public invited to be heard. Is there anyone who'd like to speak counsel at this time?
I had a teleprompter came and found me. Like we had a police officer who came and found the mayor a little while ago. Paul Tiger, 452 Dixon. So anyway, the thing that I was, I just did some cursory reading, and I certainly didn't spend a whole lot of time, a lifetime, digging through Wikipedia to learn about all of the mining acts that have happened since the 1860s, up until the 1920s, in which it was the first time that there were mineral acts that had to do with petroleum, which had not yet been the experience. The land doesn't belong to oil and gas. The land belongs to us, it belongs to the government, and we are the government, last time I checked. And so, we don't have to lease land to, you know, anyone. You guys might want to, but I noticed that we've just leased land to have a water resource, have fracking underneath it. You know, that doesn't, that doesn't turn me on. I know, you know, it's always business. And there's a royalty. When I look from the 1920 Act, the Petroleum Act, it talks about the acreage being worth $2 an acre at per a 10-year span. They're always, they're always leased in 10-year spans. So I'm thinking the government owns the property, and maybe when the lease comes up next time, we just don't lease it to people who want to frac. And that's pretty much all I had to say about it. I don't like it, and I'm looking for ways for us not to have it. Thank you. Oh, vote yes on 300.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else like to speak on final call? Public invited to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll close. Final call, public invited to be heard. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have a request to make. I need a substitute on the 27th for council with coffee. I have a commitment with Boy Scouts that day.
Katie's volunteering.
I got a volunteer, Katie Whit.
Yeah, I was going to check my calendar.
You will be with Bonnie Beer Finley.
Okay, so Katie Whit will volunteer for Alex. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to, again, remind people of the holiday parade starts at 10 o'clock. Usually, setup is over around the senior center. For those of you that are at council, at coffee with council. Halloween parade. Halloween parade. Right around the senior center. It's a great time. Again, we'll be closing Main Street, so again, which I, you know, I'm in favor of. My kids enjoy it. I'd also like to remind people, since we do not have a meeting next week, that on Wednesday, the 31st, that is Halloween, and, you know, drivers, please just be calling us, and other the kids out there, young and old, trick-or-treating. Everyone have a safe Halloween.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, I would like to bring up for a revote ordinance 2012-66. When I was, I did not hear the title of the ordinance as I was walking in, and it is an ordinance that I, to extend the one-year park fee, park and greenway maintenance fee, and I would like to vote against that, so...
You did, you did vote against that?
No, 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 I think I voted for that, but the next one, the interim fee, I voted against. Did I vote? Valerie, can we check to see what my vote was on 2012-66, please?
She voted against it.
It was under the 2013 budget ordinances.
66?
Yes. Yes, I would like to revote on that, because I erroneously voted. I didn't hear the title as I was walking in, so I was in a rush and just voted. So how do... Can I move to change my vote, Eugene? Or should we just revote? I could bring it up for reconsideration? I'd like to bring that up for, the vote on ordinance 2012-66 up for reconsideration.
Councilmember Finley.
Oh, I have something else.
Okay, all right. All right, so let's re-vote then. Okay, that's right. Let's re-vote to see if we're going to re-vote. Yeah, just said.
Councilmember Bagley, did you want...
I was just going to say this one time. I don't have a problem with it, but I don't think we should do this again. Because I think that, I think that if we do start going down this road, I mean, once the vote's taken, I think it should be taken. I'm all for it this time, you know? No, 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 I'm not scolding you. I mean, that's fine. That's what I'm saying. I'm for it this time. I'm just saying, in a nutshell, I think it's bad policy to start questioning votes after they're taken. But I'm going to give you this one.
Okay, let's vote. Swing vote. Okay, that passes four to three with Councilmember Whit, Councilmember Finley, and Councilmember Samori descending. Yeah, so I guess we'll need a new motion on ordinance 2012-66. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. I move ordinance 2012-66. Also, yeah, if this happens again, you can state in council comments that I meant to vote a certain way. And Councilmember Levison, you were walking in, and, you know, we waited for you to come in. The reading of the ordinance and a public hearing was held. Next time, you know, this is out of courtesy, but we should all be responsible for our votes, one way or the other. If you didn't like how you voted, council comments say, hey, I meant to vote this way. Revoting over again is inappropriate.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to one with Councilmember Levison descending. Okay, so now we're still back in council, in mayor comments.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to talk about my business of the week this week. We have another family-owned business, the Jester's Dinner Theater at 221 Main Street. It's a lot of fun. You ought to go if you haven't been. They're also opening up a piano bar, restaurant, and comedy club on Fridays, and they started last Friday. It'll be big fun. You should go to Jester's Dinner Theater at 221 Main Street.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. And I appreciate that consideration on the revote. I would like to thank everybody who participated and made a great event last Friday night, the multicultural inclusive committees, inclusive committees event on Friday evening at the senior center was really spectacular. And I appreciate everyone who worked so hard on it, the committee, plus everyone from all the different ethnic groups that were represented that brought food and shared their, their culture and felt comfortable sharing of themselves, that they, they came in their dress of their country and felt comfortable and welcoming and so enthusiastic. And it was a fantastic evening for everyone. And I'd also like to remind people that Saturday, we get like triple whammy or something Saturday, because besides coffee with council and the Halloween parade, it's the Day of the Dead celebration of the museum, which is the largest in the state. And I encourage everyone to get out to the museum on Saturday to enjoy all the festivities there. And I think the exhibit continues until November the 2nd also.
I'd like to remind everybody to please vote. I don't care which horse you back in this race, but the democratic process works better if you're involved, and otherwise you get the government you deserve. So please vote, and you can vote early at the city clerk's office. Excuse me, county clerk office on 529 Cockman Street. Yeah, the city clerk's office is only voting for the DDA thing. City manager, any additional remarks?
Mayor, council, I do have a couple of additional remarks. I don't, but Sandy and Valerie have some points they want to discuss, and so we'll actually go to Sandy first to talk about what's going to happen in here as you see us fighting technology issues.
Mayor and city council members, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. I did want to just mention that this, I placed one of these on each of your desks. This was one of the agenda items we did not get to with Boulder County tonight. They just really wanted to tout the Energy Smart Program and give you some information so that you could tap it with your residents, because Longmont does receive certainly some loan approvals, and they're trying to get as many of these before all these rebates dry up. So they wanted for you to have that information so you could talk about it with your constituents. So if you don't have that, let me know.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Sandy, when we meet with other cities and county commissioners, is it possible to get all their handouts in advance so we can have those? You know, I've asked the consortium of cities to do that as well. That way, we know what they're looking at, they know what we're looking at. It just was a little weird not seeing what the commissioners were referencing.
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Protem Santos, we actually sent them all the information that we sent to you, and kind of assumed that if they had the things, that they would send it back our way. So we'll make sure that that's clear during the next meeting. Absolutely. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that we have a group of folks that are working from the brand-new innovations team to try to do some work in the council chambers, and they're hoping to do that before the next meeting. The innovation team is a, is a brand-new group, where we've asked folks who are particularly tech-savvy to get together and work on citywide issues. And their first challenge was the council chambers. So they have come up with several different plans, starting from, you know, very low dollar amounts to sort of pie in the sky. They've come up with all sorts of different alternatives. But there's an implementation group that is now working from that larger innovation group, and they will be, hopefully, over the next two weeks, working to at least get the screen issues set with some different television sets, and I shouldn't even call them TVs, they're all LED monitors now, and being able to outfit them with things like Apple TVs so that you can be able to move presentations to those screens. It'll be probably a six-phase project, would be my guess, but the first phase is really trying to fix these issues that you are seeing, that you have seen tonight and every... that you are seeing, that you have seen tonight and every night, I think, for the last few weeks around the presentation information that's happening. So hopefully, when you come back in November, depending on when the meeting is, which I think is what Valerie's going to talk about, my hope is that you'll have some new technology in here. Nothing that you will have to change on your voting at this time or on your screens, but really just some presentation things that enhance that experience. So my thanks to that innovation team and their work.
And the item I need to talk about is, there has been some interest expressed by council, at least one council member, two or three canceling Thanksgiving week. You've already canceled two meetings in November, so you have to have two, but you don't necessarily have to have them on Tuesday night. So I, I just need to know council's pleasure on that. So you will, there, the other option that I would suggest, if you want to cancel Thanksgiving week, is that you hold one the first week, and you've already canceled the November sixth for the election day, so you could hold it on Thursday. It's the only night that the chambers would be available.
Councilmember Witt?
So, next Tuesday is canceled. Is canceled. Why did we cancel it? Anyone? Anyone? Yeah.
Councilmember Witt, I believe that you were talking, that you were in general trying to cancel some of the fifth Tuesdays, when it looked like you were going to be having some fifth, some really long situation. So because that was close to Halloween, it isn't on Halloween, but my understanding, when you first marked off next week as a date, was because it was a fifth Tuesday. It's a fifth, it's a third study session in October. And so they were really, you know, I think you were trying to take a look at that.
So it doesn't really do us any good for November?
It doesn't do us any good for November, because you do need to have the two meetings in November.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, if there's no objections, I would move that we hold a council meeting on Thursday, November eighth, and cancel the Tuesday, October, November twentieth, the week of Thanksgiving.
Before we vote on that, I know myself, I'm going to be here on that Tuesday for, so is there like one person that wants that? Well, I mean, the Tuesday night of Thanksgiving week, so who's not going to be here? I mean? No. I mean, do we need that? Or? How about you, Councilmember Levison?
Well, I know that in the past, a lot of years, I've traveled due to family commitments and missed that Tuesday meeting, and we've always held it and just had six or even five council members. So, you know, I'm, since we had an opportunity to, to look at our calendar so early, that was to do all this planning. So I suggest we just keep the meeting.
I withdraw.
Okay. I'm fine with keeping the meeting. Unless someone from staff saw it was a good reason to want to move that?
Council, I should, I should just tell you that there's just a few things that are currently set for that agenda, for that, for that evening. There are just a few things that are set on there that are some water issues that are coming up.
And hopefully, they're not RTD fast tracks or?
I think we can promise that there's no RTD fast tracks, oil nor gas.
Okay, great. Just, just purry dogs and backyard chickens, right? All right, I guess we're all in favor of just keeping the meeting then, that week. Okay? All right, city attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, the meeting is adjourned.